Good evening. This regular meeting of the Carabel City Commission is now in session. Today is Thursday, December the 7th, and it's Pearl Harbor Day as well. It's 6:00 PM and we're having this meeting in the Carabel City Hall chambers. And we will open with a prayer by Commissioner Allen and then followed by a pledge of allegiance. So please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, here we are again. We're approaching the end of our year at our work here for the city of Carabel. And we thank you very much for the, what I call, the wonderful year that you have given us. I feel like the city has been productive, crossed some good hurdles, and made some positive accomplishments during this year, and we thank you for that. We had a time of the season of Christmas. And again, hold your hand on everyone. Allow them to have fellowship with their family and friends and love and cherish one another. And we thank you for those times, and we bless you for what you have given us. Also, hold your hand on our world. It's in turmoil, and there's things going on, and we desperately need you to hold your hand and protect. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right then, welcome everyone. I thank you for silencing your phones. If you want to speak, you'll need to complete a speaker card if your item that you want to speak about under public comment is not on the agenda. Next on the, first up is our consent agenda, which includes the November 2nd, 2023 City Commission regular meeting minutes, the November 28th, 2023 Final Amended Budget Hearing, the November 8th workshop, and our attorney's invoices for October. And Ms. Keisha circulated all of that. Did we have an opportunity to review those items?
Yes.
Would someone like to entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gray.
On second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our public comment section. And this is where anyone in the audience is welcome to come and speak about any item that we do not have on the agenda. You're welcome to speak for three minutes. And we've got several people in attendance this evening. Thank you for coming out. Would anyone like to speak under public comment? Okay, and Keisha does not have a speaker card. All right, so then we'll move on to the commissioner reports. And Commissioner Walden, do you have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Brown?
I just want to say I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Melander?
I echo those same. I hope everybody has a blessed and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Gray? Okay, and thank you both. I don't usually give a report for a Christmas gift because my reports sometimes run long. I have a lot on my plate. But I do have two things that came up. So I would like to discuss the two items. One, the first one is a message and a request to the commission and the staff. And I just would like to say here that, and remind us all, that as we know, this board has not formally adopted Robert's Rules of Order, which are very complicated and in some cases could even bind the commission into a decision that is not able to be amended in the future. So following formal Robert's Rules is not required during our meeting. We're not required to follow Robert's Rules of Order during our meetings because we have not adopted it. But over the years, we've used a simple form of parliamentary procedure, and that includes each speaker being recognized by the chairperson prior to speaking. This process is used in our meetings when the public attendees wish to speak and has been used somewhat by the commission members and staff. In the past, I have given the commission and staff some breathing room during discussions, especially during workshops. To help with making our meetings more efficient and to provide equal treatment for all and to maintain order and to help reduce misunderstandings, going forward, I respectfully request each commissioner member and staff member participating in our meetings to be recognized by the chairperson prior to stating any comments or questions. Please be assured that everyone here is treated equal, but understand that per the city charter, the mayor is the chairperson of our meetings, which is me. The chairperson controls the meeting, has the authority to interrupt or to even end discussion that is prolonging the process of the meeting. The speaker can get my attention by saying "mayor" or raising your hand, and that's been done in the past many times. But be sure you have my attention and you are recognized to speak. When the speaker has completed their comment or discussion, please let me know by saying something like "thank you" or "that's all I have for now." I mean, we're all grownups here, we know how to do it. But it might take a little practice, we all aren't perfect. Sometimes I even forget to call for a vote, and someone up here has to remind me. But I expect we can work together to keep and demonstrate decorum in our public meetings. So my next item is a very nice letter from Mr. Corbin Polk of Carabel. And I want to share this letter with the commissioners. I see Mr. Polk is here in the meeting this evening. And this is the letter here, and I have one extra for Keisha there. And here's a couple of copies. Always when we have something that we present like this, we always give the city clerk a copy, and Ms. Keisha's our city clerk. So I'm going to read the letter now. And here's the actual letter that he wrote. And it says, "Dear Mayor La Paz, I am Corbin Polk, a lifelong resident of Carabel, and I am writing this letter to ask if you would please build a dog park for dogs to play and roam around. There are a lot of dogs in Carabel, yet no park for them. This park would also let people socialize with other dog lovers like me. Please consider building one. Thank you, Corbin Jean Polk." And he's with us here this evening. Now, this is not an agenda item, so we can't get into big discussion about it or make any decisions here. But now, we have made all the commission members aware of your requests. And if we want to move forward, if you would like to move forward with this, Mr. Polk, I would advise that you ask Ms. Courtney Dempsey, who is our city administrator, or Ms. Keisha, who is our city clerk, next week if you might have this as an item on our agenda next month, in January or February, however you feel comfortable, where we could discuss it. And there we might be able to discuss where land would be. I sent him a few items that you have to have for a dog park, and we won't get involved in that right now. But you know, we can discuss those in a regular meeting under an agenda item and see what we might be able to do or might not be able to do. But this is how you start. Is that all right with you, sir? Okay, very good. So that's all, and thank you. So in closing, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season as well. And I hope your holidays are blessed and joyous and that we let Christmas come into our world and do bring us all together because we need to learn to start working together and remove some of the hatred that we do have out there. All right, and now go to the city attorney's report.
All right, I have none this month, that's my gift.
Thank you. So the next on our agenda is the city administrator's report.
I sent out all the department reports. Did everybody receive those? Do y'all have any questions? The progress on the installation of the windows and doors of the old water plant building, that has started. From what I can see, all of the windows and doors are installed. They need some finished work around the framing. Except for the back window, which it came broken, and he's had to reorder in a back door, he's still waiting on. But looks good so far. The progress on the installation of the justice building lift and elevator, I think they were working on that this week. Ms. Tamara may have more updates, but I know that they've been out there working on that. Duke Energy EV charging stations are planned to be installed December 18th, if all goes well. That will just be the installation, there will not be any power to them yet, but he wants to get them installed before the first of the year, and then they'll come back in January and hook up the power. So hopefully December 18th. I need to ask, usually Camp Gordon Johnson requests for road closure for the Camp Gordon Johnson Parade, and they have not asked this year. But since it's an FDOT permit and it takes months to get it approved, I'm going to go ahead and ask for you guys to approve closing the road for the Camp Gordon Johnson Parade. I don't have the date or the time yet, but I'm sure it's the same route as they always take, and usually about 10:45 in the morning for about an hour.
And Ms. Courtney, that is on March the 11th. I look to see what day that is, March the 11th. And Highway 98 is what you're asking for.
Yes, Highway 98 from the bridge to
Marine Street.
Marine Street, approximately.
Okay, do we want to consider a motion for that?
I'll motion to have the city administrator contact DOT about the road closure for Camp Gordon Johnson on March the 11th.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion? All right, that motion, Keisha's by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown, to move forward with the road closure process for the Camp Gordon Johnson Parade. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, Ms. Courtney?
Last thing on my report is that, would you like to schedule a workshop in January for the discussion concerning the old school city hall building? Do anybody have any dates in mind?
Okay, I see a nod by Commissioner Brown. Would you like to, Commissioner Walden, have another workshop?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Melander?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Gray?
Yes, ma'am.
All right then, it looks like we're all in agreement. I'll say I'm available the 9th, 16th, and 23rd of January. Just go ahead and get her done. Okay.
The 16th is our CRA meeting. Do we want to just double it up that day?
It's fine with me. You want to do it, would y'all like to do it in the evening again, like we did before?
That way more people can come.
5:00 PM? All right, so does someone want to motion for that, a workshop? 16th, January, 5:00 PM.
I'll make the motion to schedule a workshop to discuss the old school building on January 16th at 5:00 PM.
Good.
Second.
Okay, and that's, all right. Keisha, that motion is by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, Ms. Courtney?
That's all I have.
That's all you have? I have just one question, and I know this and everyone on the board knows, but this is for the public information. Where is the, where are the energy EV charging stations going to happen?
They are going to go at the fire department, outside of the messer pavilion.
Okay, and there's going to be three charging stations?
Three charging stations.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Courtney? Okay, I would like to ask the board here if we can request staff during this time, maybe before we have our, how about before we have our next workshop, to reach out to the Appalachia Regional Planning Council regarding a scope of work to create your economic development and zoning maps as budgeted by the American Rescue Plan. And see if they can do that. They did do our future land use maps in the past, and I think that they have some staff there, that graphics staff, that can do that. Is that all right? Okay, all right.
And I'll have Keisha reach out because she knows what she's looking for with overlays and
Okay. All right, we have that okay. Then we'll move on then to the city clerk report.
Okay, I also need to have a meeting scheduled, a special meeting. We need to make a minor amendment to our budget, our 2023-2024 budget. It's just a housekeeping. I talked with everybody individually, but it looks like everybody is in agreement with the 14th, December 14th, if we can do that at 5:01.
Okay, that's good.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion for a special meeting.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a special meeting for the budget amendment on December 14th at 5:01 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Walden for this special meeting on December the 14th at 5:01. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? Can this motion carries?
We have, I have some other meetings. Our December 19th CRA meeting is canceled, we do not hold that. We have a December 21st meeting for P&amp;Z that's tentative. I have not heard from them yet if we will have a quorum yet or not. City Hall will be closed in observance for Christmas on December 25th and 26th, that's a Monday and Tuesday. And then we will also be closed a half a day on December 29th, Friday, the December 29th, and then Monday, January 1st, we'll be closed all day. And then our next city commission meeting is January 4th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions or comments from Ms. Keisha? Anyone?
I actually do.
Okay.
Do we have a full P&amp;Z board right now?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll move on then to Mr. Russell Large with Anovia Consulting.
Thank you, all right, for our Baywood project. We were able to confirm that meeting with DOT on the 13th of December at 11:00. And sent invitations to the mayor and Courtney to attend that, and that's a virtual teams meeting. So I'll prepare the graphics and photos with that meeting. If there's anyone else who would like to attend, let me know, and we'll add you to the list.
Okay, I have a question about that meeting. That we have identified monies that can be used on roadway projects, especially our local option gasoline fund. And I'm wondering if we offered that as a style of a match. Of course, what we have in that account is a fair amount. Of course, what we have in that account is a fair amount, but it's not certainly an equal match, and I believe this project would require $25,000 match, I think. I don't know.
I don't think it requires the match, and the, the grant that we received before under this very same program did not require a match. So I don't think it's required. It, it, it may, it may increase the, the opportunity to be funded.
Well, that's what I was about to ask. If we brought money to the table, would that help us, the possibility of getting a grant?
I think that's a fair question, and we'll certainly propose that to Ms. She Walter.
Is that all right with the commission if we, if we propose that?
Will, I thank you for doing it because I had the same thought. I'm glad you asked the question.
Okay, so we're aware of what we have in the log account. We discussed that at our workshop. So we'll, that's all the money that I can identify unless we want to use some American Rescue Plan Act money, but we'll, we'll discuss this first at, at the December meeting and see how they...
Yes.
...take to that, and then we can report back.
Right, and any other advice they may have to make that funded, fundable project.
All right. Okay.
Okay. On our lighthouse project, change order is proceeding. The new grinder pumps under that change order, those were ordered in October, and they will be delivered on the 4th of January, so it's had a long lead time. The Water Management District is processing an extension, and that will go through May But I would expect the contractor to finish well before that date. All right, on Marine Street, boardwalk is complete, seawall repair is underway, sidewalk replacement is underway. We directed the contractor to secure the site for a holiday on the harbor this coming weekend, and they have assured me that that will be done. Portion of that work has been removed, that's the, the water main work. We met with Charlie, and that, that work is really not needed at this point. They were able to fix their low pressure problem without that, so we removed that from the contract. And we'll look, we'll look for ways to utilize that money elsewhere. On the summer camp, water interconnection, we're still waiting for, for word from the Resilient Florida Program for the award there. On the Ryan Drive drainage improvements, that, that property acquisition is complete, so we're proceeding with the permitting through DOT and the Water Management District. Avenue C Boat Ramp, we had a couple additional comments to respond to, minor in nature, we've done that. We expect that permit approval soon. The golf cart crossings, I continue to ask where the status of that is, and I'm told that it's, remains under review. I think I sent an email where we had correspondence with them to Courtney a couple weeks ago. Okay, and that concludes our report.
All right, very good. Do any of the commissioners have questions or comments?
Just one comment. Russell, glad to see your health is better and you...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Large. We're glad to see you here.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have our advisory board reports, and Ms. Tammer, did you have anything additional to report here for, she didn't have a written report this month?
Well, we are making progress. I don't know if, if any of you have stopped by the Carabelle History Museum, but we have a lovely, I mean, it's really lovely elevator sitting on the back porch, so it's very exciting. And we have a few technical issues they're trying to resolve before the state elevator inspector comes. So we're, we're going to fix those things. They're scheduled, one of them's scheduled to be fixed Monday, and then there's another little minor things that are just details. And then we're waiting for the state elevator inspector, so we're hoping to get on, to get the schedule before the end of the year because I don't want to, I don't want anybody's funds to have to be recommitted or anything if we don't have to. So, so far, we're good with the state and good with the county, so hopefully that, that appears to really, now, they won't let me go in it, they won't let us look at it, they won't let us touch it until it's been approved by the state elevator inspector, and so we appreciate that. But I do think it's going to happen. It really is, so we have a lot to be thankful for. And if you haven't had a chance to come back and see the new exhibit on the postal service in, in Carabelle, it's really a very nice exhibit, and it's pretty exciting to see real signatures of real presidents there in the case, you know? It's just, I don't know, something about it. I didn't even realize postmasters were a presidential appointment until Kennedy was president. So it's kind of fun to see those, along with the local colorful things we have, and lots of amazing postcards and all over, Carabelle postcards all over the place. It's really fun. So come by and see us.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Tam, oh, excuse me.
No, that's, that's good. I just wanted to follow up on what Ms. Tammer said. I had the pleasure of visiting and looking at the elevator. It works as good as it looks. I was really surprised at how good it does look, and in the prayer I mentioned, some of the accomplishments that the city has made this year, and thanks to Ms. Tammer, there's another great accomplishment right there, and it looks great. Thank you, Ms. Tam. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments, questions? All right, then, we will move forward. The Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board did not have a report.
Tim, they called this afternoon. He said they did not have a meeting this month, and he's been traveling. He said that is his Christmas present to us, so there's no report.
Okay.
But he said he would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and he'll see us in January.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, then, the Crooked River Lighthouse Association?
Hello, I'm Steve Allen, President of the Carabelle Lighthouse Association. You may have noticed there's not a lot of activity since November the 11th. We had our big major event, Lantern Fest, and quite frankly, I took all my tools home, and I'm waiting for some help to get them back, back out there so I can get started continuing to put the playground equipment and finishing up the wall and the boat. On November 11th, we did have Lantern Fest. It was a huge success. The Pirate Ship Boat Amphitheater had the sound equipment up, and I was just really encouraged to see essentially over 200 people to 250 people for a period of about three and a half hours, sit in that amphitheater and enjoy a performance unlike any, really. It was really wonderful and unique. I'd asked the mayor who was there, any impressions about it yourself, Mayor?
I thought it was fabulous, the whole show. I thought it was wonderful, and, you know, I, I really liked the, the young maiden lantern ladies. They weren't, they're not ladies, they were, they were teenagers or pre-teens even, and I thought that was a new concept, and I know they, they enjoyed it, but the music was wonderful, the, the, everything, the festivities and the vendors that you had there. I liked the vendors that are, that were there, the food trucks especially.
Yes, absolutely.
So it was, it was a great event.
Well, thank you very much.
Y'all do good.
Thank you. Well, we're real proud of it, as it was mentioned in the paper a couple weeks ago. This, I hope, is the first of many type events out there, and that's what it was built for, and it really, you know, having the sound playing and it all sort of, and it lit up like a big giant disco ship theater thing, really sort of painted a picture of the vision, and we'll just keep moving forward, and I'll give you an update next month, and maybe there'll be some progress.
Yeah, and the TCC dancers, they actually came out into the audience, and that was a, a change.
Yeah, there was, they were always such an amazing group of young people. We had less of them this year, which was a little bit of a disappointment, but Aurora, who comes down with her, her dancers, her family, had to go to the Philippines the next morning, so sort of caused things to be a little bit less, but it was wonderful. It was really amazing, and thank you all for your support.
And thank you for your volunteer work. Do we have comments?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. So that's it for our advisory board hearings, and we'll move on to our public hearing right now, which is the second reading of ordinance 492, and we'll ask Mr. Hartman to read that, and then we'll have to take action.
All right. So this is ordinance 492, and it's an ordinance amending the City of Carabelle Conference and Plan to change the permitted land use of one, of a 1.5 acre parcel described as lots 6, 7, and 8, block C, range 288, and lots 1, 2, 1 and 2 of block C, range 389, of pickets addition, and also a portion of the Northeast 3rd Street and Northeast Avenue B lying adjacent to the above lots in Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida, from any residential from, to, adjacent from residential to public use, providing for the repeal of any ordinance or parts therefrom in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. So this is the land use change portion for the cemetery.
For the cemetery. The cemetery extension. So we've, we've been going through this for several months. Do we have questions or comments to Mr. Hartman?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 492 as read.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And Ms. Keisha, that motion to approve ordinance 492 is by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Gray. Is there any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, she carries. And then we're going to now call to order a quasi judicial hearing, and this is for ordinance 491, and it's the second reading, and I will ask Mr. Hartman to read that, and then we will need action.
All right, and this is ordinance number 491. It's an ordinance of the City of Carabelle, Florida, rezoning a 1.5 acre parcel described as lots 6, 7, and 8, block C, range 288, and lots 1 and 2, block C, range 389, of pickets addition, and also a portion of Northeast 3rd Street and Northeast Avenue B lying adjacent to the above lots in Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida, from R2 single-family mobile home to Z1 public use, providing for the repeal of any ordinance or parts therefrom in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Do we have any other comments or questions regarding this rezoning of land for cemetery, our cemetery extension? Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 491 as read.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have that commotion, commotion, motion by Commissioner Melander and a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And I adjourn this quasi judicial hearing, and we'll return to our regular commission meeting, which we now have new business. Yes, sir?
If I may.
Okay.
Just one item of housekeeping. I will bring it to the commission either in January or February, but it'll probably be January. I'll work with Courtney, and I, we've done it before, and I just, maybe by resolution we can do it, but it will be just a resolution to abandon that portion of Northeast 3rd Street and Northeast Avenue B, so that that'll merge with everything else. So you all keep me honest, but I'll make sure we have that as housekeeping on it, so...
And is there anything else, Mr. Hartman?
That's it.
Okay, and Mr. Large?
With the approval of these two ordinances, does that free up the surveyor to begin monumentation?
I would think, doesn't it, Courtney?
The clearing's all done, so...
Move forward.
Or the, does the abandonment need to occur?
No, that, that's fine as far, that won't slow that up. What I was going to do on the, in the ordinance, there should be, or resolution, the abandonment should provide a legal description of the portions of, because we're not doing the whole, whole road. North, the portion of Northeast 3rd and the portion of Northeast Avenue B, I thought we could do it by reference to lot numbers, you know, just kind of east of, blah, blah, blah. But if we're having a surveyor out there, I mean, he can draw it up.
I see. Provide a legal description?
Provide a legal description of the portions of these two roads that is being abandoned.
Okay.
All right.
And I'll use that in the resolution.
That's okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Make sure we get it right.
Yeah, we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Hate to have to hold the survey up even another month.
Me too.
So, all right, then. So our new business, and we have item one under new business, and this is discussion and possible action concerning the vacant land. Were we, is this, is this correct? We didn't have, I've got this right, right? Okay. I didn't know if I had mixed up item one and item two. Discussion and possible action concerning the vacant land in Lanark for possible EMS extension, and this is requested by the Franklin County Board of County Commission, and I'm going to toss this over to Courtney so she can brief us on this item.
I did talk to Ms. Commissioner Sanders this past month. She came in and she talked to me about this, and I asked her to submit a formal request. So I sent that out to all you guys, and so they're requesting, I think it was a three, or 2.3 acre parcel of land next to the fire department in Lanark that the city owns to build their new EMS station. And the letter was requesting to sell, trade, or donate.
And did you talk to her about any kind of trading or...
I did not talk to her about trading, but I did mention that we, we wanted some help paving 5th Street, and she seemed agreeable to that. Now, we didn't say, we'll trade this for, but, but you can always make, you know, whatever conditions y'all would like, or it's up to you guys.
Do we have comments from the commission?
I do.
Okay.
I'll share my feelings. It's, the request is a need, as she stated, for medical services in this area of the county, and I feel like that we, as a partner, we as part of this community, Carabelle, that's not particularly per se in Carabelle, but I feel like it's assisting Carabelle in a way by having a permanent ambulance or first responder station positioned in Lanark. And I guess maybe I'm old fashioned. I look at the old part of it as, for example, we needed property for expansion of the cemetery, and the school board was very willing to work with us, and they practically donated over five acres of land to us. And that's two governments working together. And I feel like we kind of in the same situation here, and we do get assistance from the county in a certain, in certain areas. So I feel like it would be beneficial to this part of the county and the citizens of Carabelle to have that facility, and I'd be willing to say, let's donate the property. That's just my opinion.
Do we want to, okay, thank you, thank you. Do we want to ask for any assistance with road paving of 5th Street?
Yes, ma'am.
You would like, that's your opinion as well? Okay. All right, you know, to straight out donate, you know, I was a little confused there, but you want to work with her or with the commission on that?
If I may. I wouldn't want to hold the county hostage and say, the only way we're going to let you have the property is to pave a road or whatever. But I feel like, in the old analogy, we scratching their back, they scratch our back.
Yes.
If we donate that property, which is again, and what I was saying, in my mindset, it's benefiting this entire area, but it's helping the county Board of Commissioners to set up a ambulance service department in Lanark Village, which is going to benefit our area, but then in turn, we ask for them to help and support us a little bit on some of our roads, but not necessarily hold them hostage to a trade. That's just my opinion. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. And I would say that the road that we're considering has two county facilities on it, or two facilities that are owned by the county, Williams Clinic, and then the Health Department Building is owned by the county. And we have worked together, this board has worked with District 5, when we got paving for the library parking lot at, at a good rate because we had pavers there already, they funded, the county paid for it, but it was at, at an extremely good rate through a CRA project. And then we worked together on the Ryan Drive culvert, which was... was something that was badly needed. And, uh, it was, it was a good project. It was a lot of money, but we, we worked together on that and split that cost. So I think we can continue to, to work together. And Ms. Courtney?
Russell did get a preliminary scope of work for the paving, um, for 5th Street. And then he, you know, he did all the way around. And I don't know if Russell wants to bring that up, but.
That's fine. I would think that we would need that to move on with negotiations on this item.
Certainly. Um. Okay, so the, the first, we split it into two segments, uh, the first being 12th Street from 98 up to Gray. And then the second segment would be 5th Street from 98 to Gray and then along Gray to 12th Street. So basically circumnavigating the block there. Um, and the, the segment two, the 5th Street segment, um, uh, we would include, um, geotechnical work there because we need, we need to get pavement cores, um, to, to do a, a good quality pavement design. And I, I really think, um, that the cracking along, uh, 5th in particular is pretty rough. So I, I do think that it needs to be milled and then resurfaced. If you, if you don't mill it, those flack, those, uh, cracks will reflect just right up to the new asphalt. So, so, um, having that pavement cores would establish the depth of the mill that's required. Um, I think we can, uh, produce the plans using aerials and LotRGAS information. So we, we can save costs there by not having to do survey on the portions that, um, are to be resurfaced. The one part of Gray Avenue that does require reconstruction, we will need survey there. And we would produce, uh, traditional design plans there, similar to what we did at Kio's Addition with the geotextile fabric. And that, that would solve the issue with the underlying, um, poor soil condition. So, um, fees for each of those, 12th Street, that's resurfacing only, um, that would be 12,000. And, uh, the other segment, uh, 5th Avenue and then along Gray, and that would include the resurfacing and the reconstruction, um, that would be 22,500.
So that's 5th, sorry.
Yes.
So that's 5th Street and Gray Avenue?
Yes. And, and that does include the reconstruction part of Gray Avenue.
Okay, I'm, I'm extremely confused.
Okay.
Extremely. I thought we were asking for a scope of work from, uh, for, on 5th Street over here, 5th Street, from Highway 98 to, to Gray Avenue.
To Gray.
And then a scope of work for Gray Avenue back there from 5th Street to 12th Street. I didn't know we were asking.
I think it's just got mixed up.
Did I, did I, did I confuse 5th and 12th?
Yes.
I may have.
Okay, so, let's, let me, can we start over again?
Yeah, that's cool.
Okay.
I'm following.
All right, I don't know where we are, but.
Okay.
All right.
Well, um.
Tell us about 5th Street. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, 5th Street, all right.
All right. Just 5th Street?
Yes.
Standalone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That would be, um, we would be able to do that with, uh, geotechnical, um, cores and then, uh, plans using aerials and LotR information. Uh, we would also produce the construction documents, specifications, advertisement for bids, uh, construction administration, all that would be included. Um, and a fee for that would be 12,000. That's just 5th.
5th Street?
Yes.
Okay, 5th Street. Do we have any idea what the actual construction cost would call, would, would be?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have that with me.
Any kind of.
I can, I can, I can produce that though.
Any kind of a estimate?
I can do an estimate.
Okay, all right. And then now, Gray Avenue.
Okay. Gray Avenue. Okay. Gray Avenue alone, um, that would include the, um, the reconstruction part. That would be 12,500.
And this is for the engineering, design and engineering and plans?
Yes, and construction administration.
Okay. All right. And so then, but then what we need, uh, on top of, so you said 12,000 for 5th Street and 12,500 for Gray?
Yes.
Okay, and so now, now what we need to know is some kind of, uh, in my opinion, an estimate of what the actual construction's gonna cost on these two projects. I mean, just some, something so that we know.
Okay.
Where money's coming from and what we might need to, to do to, to help, uh, move forward with the county as well.
Okay. I'll, I'll provide, I'll provide a, a proper estimate for that work.
All right. Is that all, all right with everyone?
That's exactly what I'd like to have.
Okay, okay. Uh, everybody's fine? Okay. So then how, how, do we have suggestions from the commission on how we would like to move forward to, you know, we should, uh, give the county an answer on this, this request? And, um, who, who, who wrote the email to you? I can't even.
Erin Griffin.
Okay, so I guess you would respond to Erin, okay. You have, did you, okay.
I agree with Commissioner Melander that we should go ahead and donate this land and then let them know that we would like help, but we're still working on the numbers for the road paving. But I don't see any reason to hold off on donating the land to them so that they can get started.
What do you all think about that?
I agree. I bet. That land really serves us a purpose. But the community would have a nice, modern facility in, uh, this, they've done a lot for us, like Mr. Melander said. They've donated us property. I think it's, it's best for our community to do this. It's not like a piece of property we're gonna use in the future. That came when we took over the Lanark water sewer. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Mr. Wilder?
No, that's just my opinion.
Okay. All right, any, anything over here from Mr. Gray or Mr. Melander regarding that? You did say to go ahead and donate it. You felt like that?
Yes, I agree. It would benefit our community and I think it's a great idea.
Okay. You, sir?
I've, I've given mine. I'm good, thank you.
All right. So then, um, write back, and that's fine with me, uh, write back to Ms. Erin and let her know that we'll, we'll be, we'll gladly donate the property, but we want to, yes, sir?
Do you need a motion?
Uh, and just, yeah, we'll need a motion for that, for sure. But that we would want to, um, we're still working on the numbers, as Commissioner Brown said, on, on our paving cost over here. Um, but, uh, you know, if we, we can contact who, I don't know who we should contact regarding that, Erin again, or Commissioner Sanders?
Well, it was, Erin sent the email, but Commissioner Sanders was copied and so was Michael Moron, so I'm just gonna reply back to all of those.
Okay.
And I will ask for some.
And then after the first of the year, we'll, we'll get back with them, um, if, you know, so then this way, they can, they can start moving forward and then if, you don't have to be so pressed, uh, if you can't get it in January, we're having a workshop the end of Janu, whenever we said, I can't remember when we're having that workshop. When was that?
16th, I think.
The 16th, you might be able to attend that and let us know, or, or even in February.
And also Russell, I don't think that we need plans and specifications because they'll probably add it on to their paving projects.
I see.
With their contractor.
I see.
Most likely.
Now what?
That Russell wouldn't necessarily need plans and specifications because they'll probably, or not to bid out, because they'll most likely give it to their contractor who's already doing their paving jobs.
Give what now?
The work.
Oh, you think we can move quick enough on it, on 12th Street are you talking about?
No, 5th Street.
5th Street? You think we can move?
But he, he's not gonna need to bid that out, I don't believe. If they, if they're gonna use their contractor, that they're already engaged in.
Is that what Ms. Sanders talked about?
We did not talk about that.
I didn't know that I would, yes, sir.
The, the only exception would be the, the portion of Gray that would be reconstruction.
We might end up.
Because it, I'm sorry, because their, because their contractor, I think Courtney's right. I think their contractor has a resurfacing contract. Um.
In the past, when we have shared paving, their contractor has done the paving work. The cities just gave our portion of the money.
But now, uh, Mr. Russell talked about that it would need geotechnical and possibly some other things done to 5th Street in certain areas of it, that they might not.
He would probably still need to do that. He just doesn't need to prepare it for bid, I don't believe.
Do, do you know if their contractor does milling as part of their contract?
They do.
Okay. I think we can coordinate that with the county.
Okay.
Now, the, the portion that's reconstruction, um, maybe not. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think that's in the scope of work for the county's contractor.
Mm-hmm.
But it may be, it may be something that we, that we could negotiate with their contractor.
Is there reconstruction on 5th Street or just?
Gray.
Gray, just gray. So, we might end up just working with them on, on 5th Street.
I believe we'd still need to do the geotech that Russell's talked about.
Yeah.
I just don't think he needs bid specifications because their contractor, that they have a contract that does all of their paving, would most likely do the work.
That's fair.
Okay.
That's fair.
All right. All right. So, uh, can we have a motion then to, um, donate this, uh, property, this 2.31 acres to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to donate the requested land, the land requested by the Board of County Commissioners for the ambulance service in Lanark.
And I'll second that.
All right. Uh, that motion, Keisha's by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown, to donate the land requested by, uh, the Franklin Board of County Commissioners, um, for their, uh, emergency management service in Lanark. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Thank you. Mr. Hartman, did you?
Yes, I'll, I'll just work with, um, the county attorney on the conveyance.
Okay. Okay. Um, then next we have Item 2. That is, uh, discussion of possible action concerning, uh, the truck route ordinance, and this is requested by Mr. Charlie Thompson. And I believe Mr., I see Mr. Thompson in, in here. Would you, would you please come forward, sir? And, uh, thank you for coming in this evening. And just state your name for the record.
My name's Charles Thompson.
Mm-hmm.
I've been living where I live at now, uh, for over 40 years. And, uh, I'm here about this ordinance. I ain't gonna call it a truck route, cause as you see on the stuff we got, it was no longer a truck route. But as I was talking to the chief a while back about, uh, the ordinance, he came, told me that on the moot, what do you call that code?
Muni.
Muni code.
That they still had the old one on it. Mm-hmm.
And that some of the truck drivers were using that old one to get by the law. I, I knew this two years ago, but I thought it was already fixed. But it wasn't. So, uh, I'm here to ask y'all to help fix this ordinance. Now, we done had, uh, done been passed. I think we started working on it 2014. And 2015, it was approved by the commission. Uh, I think it was Mayor, uh, Curly Messer.
Yes, sir.
And then, when we, it tore, you know, the trucks was tearing up the roads, still tearing up the roads when going through there. If you go down that road now and look on the edge of the road, it's, it's tearing it up. You, y'all know how much trouble we had fixing the cover pipe. It took the county and us to do it. Who's gonna fix the road when the trucks tear it up? And you can't go down it. Truck should not be going down there in front of people's houses, right next to the doors. If you look, you know, on the west side of, we get to the bridge, it's right at the doors almost of them homes.
Mm-hmm.
And they also got a city sidewalk that crosses that. So we need to fix this ordinance, whatever it takes to fix the ordinance, before we can get it back like it was. You know, Ms. Gerald, she helped it at that time, make the Lake Morality Road the truck route. She's back in again now. I'm sure she would still help us any way we can too on that.
So you're saying back in 2015, she helped, or 14 and 15 helped to, uh, make Lake Morality Road the truck route for trucks that are not doing business in the city limits of Carabel?
Right. She, she helped make it the truck route. Then, me and her talked a lot on it before we brought it to the city. So then we brought it to the city, me, Bobby Lee, and Warren Roddenberry, the retired sheriff, brought it to the city meeting.
Yes, sir, you did.
And you was there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you was there then. I think nobody else was on the board then.
No.
But it was approved that night by, by the commission, which I appreciate it. So, lawyer might can tell us how to fix this thing, what we need to do to fix it, cause, you know, there are kids on bicycles riding on that road and stuff. They don't need to be coming through there tearing up the road or tearing up families. So, what else do I need to say?
Okay. Well, uh, let me ask the commissioners if they have, uh, questions or comments at this time.
Uh, I've talked to Mr. Thompson about this and he's got some real serious concerns. They're using this truck route. No, it's not a truck route. They're using it as a truck route. But there's some, uh, discretion of, are they legal or, or they're not? So we need to get it, where if they go down that road in a big truck, they're breaking the law. So our police department can issue them citations. Right now, we kinda in limbo whether we can do that or not, as by understanding. So, we can work this out where, I don't know what we have to do, change ordinance or.
I'm not sure either. Uh.
What's a big concern of these land, these homeowners on that highway? You live there?
Yes, I live there.
You did?
I, I try not to ask for anything.
But you're not asking.
Around my house, so, you know, I've never done that before.
You're not, this is Mr. Thompson.
Mm-hmm. Uh, but I, I will say that, uh, I was very much surprised back two years ago, when you called me and said that, uh, the old ordinance is still appearing on the, on the Muni code. And I looked there and yes, the ordinance from 1980 is still on Muni code. And I don't understand why, you know, uh, I, I spoke with the attorney ba, about it back then, and there's some wording that's missing from the current ord, the ordinance that was approved in 2015, uh, that, that will not make that, uh, 1980's, uh, ordinance go away. So, something has to be done. Uh, and so that makes it, I think I'm understanding from the chief, then that makes it difficult to enforce because you've got two ordinances there. Um, and, and, yes, ma'am?
I can answer that.
Okay.
The 2015 ordinance did not repeal the former ordinances.
Ah.
And then that wording has to be in there. So what needs to be done is we need to write a new ordinance and repeal all of the old ordinances.
Okay. All right then, Commissioner.
Courtney took the words out of my mouth and follow up and correct. We, we, the city and, and the folks around the city and myself, we haven't considered Ryan Drive a truck route for many years. Uh, when this come up, Mr. Thompson and I talked. I had a, a meeting with, uh, the attorney and, uh, city administrator. And what Courtney just said is what Mr. Hartman explained, and I would ask him to explain that just as soon as I get through. And what it sounds like to me, and I expressed this to Mr. Thompson, that we need to clean up what hasn't been cleaned up. Uh, because again, it's, it's pretty much accepted by most construction companies and large equipment operators that the truck route is Lake Morality Road, 98 and Lake Morality Road. Uh, I've noticed and watched, I don't see, well, without specifying anyone in particular, but the majority of the trucks that I see, large trucks, et cetera, heavy equipment, including the State Forest Service, which has a large amount of heavy equipment. They're all using Lake Morality Road. But again, as Mr. Thompson said, some are looking at the Muni code and they're getting confused on it because it hadn't been cleaned up. And where we're at right now, we just need to clean up what hasn't been cleaned up in the past and get it straight and make sure that we're legitimately signed out there physically on the roads. And that was one thing that the chief had noted and discussions with him. And with that, I'll, I'll say I would like to request. And with that, I'll, I'll say I would like to request that the attorney kind of give the legal part of it right now where we're at between the muni code and the 2000, or 1980 ordinance and the 2015 ordinance. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I will, I'm gonna do a short explanation, but I, I do not want to confuse things worse.
True.
I have talked to the chief about this at length. I've talked to the administrator at length. I've talked to commissioners at length. And the ordinance we adopted in 2015 did have the repealer language in it. We can certainly follow up with muni code as to why there's any conflict. The plain language of the ordinance, and I, I would go, I need to go over this again with the chief, because what we're really talking about is Ryan Drive.
Yes.
Is why are people on Ryan Drive? And for instance, why are people also using sixty, I say people, but trucks, big trucks, transiting down, going south on 67 Tallahassee Street to get to 98 and then going east or west? That should not be happening.
They are doing that as well. They're not just using Ryan Drive. They're going on 67. They're going on 67 and, and cutting, turning right there on Avenue A, I believe it is, by the Carabel Hotel and coming out at the Veterans Park and?
The only vague part that we do need to tighten up is the idea that, you know, the way we, it covers it. It's, it does, it covers it okay. But, but it doesn't contemplate is, is a, what we've got, right? We've got a couple folks who run big trucks, and they're on 67. And they're not, you know, until they pull out on 67, it doesn't talk about going south on 67, right? If you're going south on 67, north of Lake Morality Road, before you get to Lake Morality Road, then you're gonna be taking Lake Morality Road down to 98, going east or west. But if, what if you're inside that envelope before you even?
Yeah.
Get on 67, right? So, we, we, we need to clarify the whole thing. It'll be simpler to pass one more, cut it way down in size, but address that, that fact, basically, that you have trucks in that window.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Mr. Hartman. Excuse me, please. Okay.
But that is what is missing. So, and again, I, I apologize for some of the confusion because I've talked about this, and we've talked about the old ordinance, new ordinance. I say new, but the old one, the eighties, 2015, what's online. But we do need to clear it up. And what's online is what we're kind of bound by, because that's what's known to the public, easily enough, right? So, but we need to, we'll talk about it, but we need to add a fifth item here to account for, you know, folks. And I think that the solution is, everybody just, they have to get to Lake Morality Road. They can't get to 98 going south on 67, period, right? So, unless local traffic, unless they're there.
Ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't it say in that ordinance, if you're working in the city, you take the nearest route to the nearest truck route, which would be 98, you on the road? Don't it say that in there somewhere?
Yeah, and I think we're gonna get into some art. I mean, it's a, it's a, you're right, it's a measurable distance.
So, you've up 67, the nearest route would be to Lake Morality?
Yeah, and so, I'll, let me look at it again. I mean, Lord knows I drive the extra lot, I'll be familiar with it. And we'll, you know, 67 is really the issue. I don't know why anybody be on Ryan Drive to begin, unless they got local business. They, they need to stay off Ryan Drive.
And it's, let's, don't forget Three Rivers Road as well. And Three Rivers Road has a, is it 25 or 35, Chief, mile per hour? Thirty-five. And that's a residential with a sidewalk and a sidewalk crossing, just like Ryan Drive. So, you know, we need to remember that these are residential neighborhoods that we're, we're referring to. So, I would, I would suggest for now, we're not really dealing with an ordinance amendment, that we merely direct staff, Courtney and Mr. Hartman and the chief, to get down to the hard tacks with this thing and, and put together, tighten up this ordinance and put together either an amended ordinance or a new ordinance. Is that all right, Mr. Hartman?
That'll work.
Can I give, can I give the lawyer one piece of paper that he may and may not have that?
Yes, sir.
This was the public notice that was put out from the city to all the truck drivers when it was happening.
And then also, the chief had mentioned that we need to get FDOT-style, when, when it does happen, FDOT legal signage and maybe another sign or something. But you all will put this together and bring it forward as a recommendation in, in an ordinance style for the, for the commission. Is, are we, can we agree in principle on that?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Melander?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Brown? All right, yes and yes and yes and yes. Okay. Five yeses.
All right, can I sit down then?
Yes, sir, we thank you for coming. Wonderful to see you. All right. So, that was item two under new business. And now, we'll, can we move forward to old business? Okay, item one, a discussion and possible action concerning Sunset Isle request to amend the ordinance to allow RVs in Phase One to the same extent that they are allowed in Phase Two. This is requested by Scott Gronholm, president of the Sunset Isle HOA. And if you'll come forward, sir, and thank you for submitting your, your recreational vehicle rules.
I'm Scott Gronholm. I'm the president of the HOA for Sunset Isle Owners Association. And the address is HC 63, Box 5007, Carabel, Florida. I, basically, this is all, old news or old something, because I have come before y'all in the past. And it took us a while to get our, our HOA meeting organized and then everything. So, that's why it's taken so long on our side. But we were able to amend our, our recreational vehicle rules. I, I think from our discussion in the, in the previous meeting, there were sort of two different concepts that, that we were having problems with. And those were making sure that every, every RV is moved every 180 days. And then also, to make sure that they're moved within a, a storm. And so, what we did was amended our, our rules and added the, basically, the, the last four bullet points in y'all's copy there, so. And so, we're gonna, you know, the, the 180 days, I'm just, we've, we've tried to figure out the best way to sort of monitor that. But the plan right now is to basically create a spreadsheet to where, right now, we've, we've put 180 days out. And we've got a date that everybody needs to move their RV by that certain date. But also, our, our sites are kind of transient. So, I envision a month from now, one of our board members will go around and say this, 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 you know, all the lots that are vacant, then they will sort of push that 180 days out on that spreadsheet. So, we're hoping that pretty much all of those will continue to leapfrog out. Now, we do know that there's a few people that are gonna need to be told to, to move every 180 days. So, that's something else that, that we're gonna require, so. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, Mr. Hartman?
Let me ask this, this is the only reigning issue that came up. I know we talked about that, was the association, basically. Have they voted to, that the association wants to allow RVs in Phase One?
Yes, we did. And that was unanimous, except for one, so yes.
But is that, did you?
We changed our covenant, we changed our covenant.
You've always, the last time we did this, you brought us a letter from the association, just representing that to the?
I think I already gave that to you, but?
Yeah, they, but y'all voted on that for the last meeting. And we, moving forward, we requested that they tighten up their HOA. All right, do we have comments or questions from the commissioners regarding this? Did all of you all see that there are new rules that they're adding to the bylaws? And you say that it was basically unanimous approved by your board, except for one?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, Mr. Hartman, then, if this board approved their request, how, how would we move forward?
We already have a roadmap on this. What we'll do is I'll prepare an ordinance amending the PUD ordinance that they have in place now to allow RVs in Phase One. It'll mirror the language that we used for Phase Two, and it can include some of these conditions as well.
Oh, the amended ordinance can include some of these?
Include conditions that are set forth in there. I'll take a copy.
Excuse me. And then, this would be, have a, have a first and second hearing?
Yes, it'll be fast like any other ordinance, so first and second reading advertised.
And Ms. Keisha?
I just had a quick question, just thought of. This is gonna be one RV per lot?
Yes, ma'am. It states that on here. I think it's real close, or twice, actually, but?
I thought I read that.
Commissioner Brown says it's up top.
Right under vehicles permitted, it says only one RV shall be parked on the property. I think it even says it above that somewhere else.
And then, the, the 180 days, that comes from our flood ordinance. It is required on any, but we ask them to put it in their rules as well to help us keep it governed, especially where they are on the river.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Keisha. Anything else? All right. And, and so, then, would you be able to get this done, Mr. Hartman, over the holidays and have it on our January agenda?
Yes, based, yeah, no problem.
Okay, do we need a vote? Or can we just direct you to do this like we did on the last item for the truck?
Since it isn't a general item, if you all don't mind voting.
Okay. So, then, what we want is a vote to direct Mr. Hartman to develop an ordinance amending the Sunset Isle's PUD ordinance that's now in place.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and that motion is by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown, to direct the attorney to develop an amended ordinance to their PUD ordinance that's in place at Sunset Isle right now. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you so much for your time. And I'd just ask if we could get this as quickly as possible on the schedule.
That's as fast as it can happen. Second, second reading in February.
Keisha, if there's anything I need to do, please let me know. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, may we move forward? All right, item two under new business is the draft amended alcoholic beverage ordinance. And I'll just be real quick here. This is the fifth consecutive meeting. This item has appeared on the commission meeting agenda. August 3rd and September the 7th, the meetings were tabled until further, until a full board could be present. But we did have some, some discussion amongst ourselves on those two dates. And, and it was on the public meeting agenda so that the public knew that this was under consideration. On October the 5th, we had a first draft that was reviewed, and the, this item was tabled to November the 2nd, where we reviewed a second draft. And on November the 2nd, this item was tabled again today, December the 7th, for now, our third revision, and which is what we will review here in public tonight. I would ask that we can follow the same process we did last month and have the attorney start from the beginning. And this is for public record and for public knowledge so that we have this draft ordinance read out loud for pub, for the public to hear. Start from the beginning and read our third revision that we've all worked on. And if any, you know, read it paragraph for paragraph. And if we have questions, let me know. We can stop paragraph by paragraph or, you know, just get my attention. And we'll move forward now, Mr. Hartman. If that's all right with everyone? Okay, let's go.
All right. And what I'll do is I'll just, I'll read the caption, then move into the meat of the ordinance. So, my caption is just ordinance number 493, an ordinance of the City of Carabel, Florida, amending ordinance 443 is amended by ordinance 480, which is an ordinance pertaining to the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages within the city limits by amending the distance and manner of which the distance between said sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages and churches or schools is measured, providing for repeal of ordinances inconsistent therewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, if you could be just a little louder.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
So, the first paragraph talks about license, licenses required. And what it says is, license required. All manufacturers, distributors, importers, exporters, and vendors of alcoholic beverages shall comply with all licensing and regulatory requirements of Florida law and all rules and regulations promulgated pursuant thereto. Provisions of this ordinance are supplemental and subordinate to any such law or regulation, where competing interpretations of this ordinance could lead to invalidity. Under the principles of preemption, this ordinance shall be interpreted in accordance with the argument which avoids preemption while maintaining the integrity and intent of the ordinance. And what that does, there's no changes in that paragraph. That just recognizes the state's preemption of this area, leaving, as we've talked about many times, location and hours of operation to the municipality, but basically, everything else to the state. Paragraph two, and this does contain some revisions. And paragraph two is important. This one deals with location for sale of alcoholic beverages that must be approved by the city commission. Alcoholic beverages may only be sold from or served at duly licensed premises which meet all zoning and location requirements of the City of Carabel zoning ordinance and this ordinance. Then, there's a deletion, which, which is the kind of a, the part that was deleted was leaving kind of a discretionary decision to the city commission on this. Then, moving into the next paragraph, that does contain additions that we've made, is, under no circumstances will alcoholic beverages be consumed, served, or permitted to be served or consumed in any standalone bar establishment in the city located within 500 feet of a church or school. And then, added was, under no circumstances will alcoholic beverages be consumed, served, or permitted to be served or consumed in any public food service establishment in the city within 350 feet of a church or school.
Do we have any questions on that? Do we have any questions or comments from the audience on that? So, now, we're bringing into the picture public food service establishments that can serve alcoholic beverages between 350 feet from a church or school to the 500-foot distance, where after 500 feet, there's no, there's no guidelines on that, no ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Hartman?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, this is a change from the current ordinance. It's reducing the distance for restaurants.
All right, do we have questions or comments from anyone?
Just for, just for the public's info. This was brought up, and we started this to try to assist the desires of the public and the restaurant establishments to be able to serve beer and wine at their restaurants with a meal. This for the public's information. That's the reason why this was brought up. And we, we entered into discussions, as the mayor described, and we've looked at this thing for several months. But that's the reason why it was brought up. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Scott?
I've experienced this in another municipality, so I have a question. Is there, how, the way the distance is measured, is it from the front door and as someone would walk along a sidewalk?
Yep, I'll get to that. So, a good question.
That's coming.
And that's the next paragraph.
Okay. Okay, and Commissioner Gray? Now, Commissioner Gray brought this forward to us, this request. Do you have comments at this time?
Nope, everything's shaping up.
Everything's shaping up, you say? Okay. All right, Mr. Hartman?
The next paragraph deals with measurement, and it's, the measurement of the distance between the place of business, standalone bar, or public food service establishment where alcoholic beverages are consumed or served in a church or school shall be from the main entrance door to the main entrance door of each establishment as a crow flies. So, we're not dealing with walking. We're dealing with a straight line as a crow flies.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have questions on that? Do we all understand that? And Mr. Scott, is that clear then to you as a member of the public?
It's, I'll just shut up. I mean, I don't, I don't, I just, it's my, it's my experience. It would be as, as a, not as the crow flies, but as a, you know, a distance around buildings and such. But y'all have discussed this.
We've been through it many times, for years and years.
The lawyers twist, the lawyers tend to twist the, those distances.
But we've measured it in several different ways. It gets amended, you know, every so many years, so.
Yeah, we have had it as a walking distance before, measurement along roadways and sidewalks and things, but that got twisted.
Okay, Mr. Hartman?
Paragraph three, hours during which sale of alcoholic beverages are not allowed. A, it shall be unlawful for public food service establishments in the city located between 350 feet and 500 feet from a church or school for any alcoholic beverages to be sold, served, dispensed, or permitted to be served between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM each day and every day of the week. So you'll see there, we deleted all the holidays, just as it's redundant. And we also importantly removed, deleted the word consumed because if someone gets served at 8:59, they can enjoy their beer past 9:00 PM. So they can consume it past that time. They just can't be served it or, you know, sold that drink.
Do we have questions on this?
That's in the restaurant.
And this is for the public food service establishments?
Yes.
Between the 350 and 500 feet? Do we have any questions from the audience? All right.
And then paragraph B, it shall be unlawful for standalone bars or public food service establishments in, in the city located 500 feet or greater from a church or school for any alcoholic beverage to be sold, served, dispensed, consumed, or permitted to be served between the hours of 1:00 AM and 7:00 AM each day, except that alcoholic beverages may be sold, consumed, served, or permitted to be served between midnight and 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday nights, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, Memorial Day Eve, Fourth of July Eve, Labor Day Eve, and Thanksgiving Day Eve.
Okay.
So that's the extended, takes into account the extended business hours on weekends and holidays.
Do we have comments or questions here? All right, Mr. Hartman, there's one item that's a typo, and I think Ms. Courtney recognized it as well. The, in the middle there, except that alcoholic beverages may be sold, consumed, served, or permitted to be served between 1:00 AM?
Got it.
And 2:00 AM?
Thank you.
Okay, and then now this is referring to standalone bars or public food service establishments located 500 feet or greater outside the, the 500-foot buffer zone.
Okay, and moving to paragraph four, we, this is where we provide definitions. And we define a standalone bar means any licensed premises devoted during any time of operation predominantly or totally to serving alcoholic beverages, intoxicating beverages, or intoxicating liquors, or any combination thereof for consumption on the licensed premises in which the serving of food, if any, is merely incidental to the consumption of any such beverage and the licensed premises is not located within and does not share any common entryway or common indoor area with any other enclosed indoor workplace, including any business for which the sale of food or any other product or service is more than an incidental source, source of gross revenue. So that's our definition of bar. And obviously, it goes kind of painfully into detail there so that it separates it from essentially anything else.
Do we have questions or comments on this definition of a standalone bar? From the commission members, from the audience? All right, Mr. Hartman?
All right. So B is the definition of public food service establishment, which means any building, vehicle, place, or structure, or any room or division in a building, vehicle, place, or structure where food is prepared, served, or sold for immediate consumption on or in the vicinity of the premises, called for or taken out by customers, or prepared prior to being delivered to another location for consumption. And it goes on to say, a minimum of 65% of the seating provided for customers shall be restaurant-style seating, such as tables or booths, of adequate size to accommodate the service of full-course meals in accordance with the number of chairs or other seating facilities provided at the table. So what we did there was combined some of the old language with the statutory definition of public food service establishment to make sure that we're dealing with restaurants.
Do we have comments or questions regarding this definition of public food service establishment? And the style of seating that would be in a public food service establishment?
I still don't agree with that, but.
Well, we compromised to 65%. So is there any question or comment from the audience on that? All right, Mr. Hartman?
All right. The next paragraph is, the provisions of this ordinance apply with respect to the location of active churches and schools existing on the date of ordinance adoption. Churches or schools established after the date of adoption of this ordinance shall not be considered when approving or denying a business's right to sell or serve alcoholic beverages under the provisions of this ordinance. Active church or school for purposes of this ordinance shall be defined as a building used as an educational institution for children or a building used for public Christian worship open on the date of this ordinance as adopted. Or, I'm sorry, the date this ordinance is adopted. And the purpose of this paragraph was to address the, we had a comment at the last meeting that we want to make sure that we're acknowledging and protecting schools and churches in town now. But if a business is in business, we don't want to create a conflict where someone sets up a church or a school right next door to someone who's also about to open up a restaurant, moving forward. So after the date of this ordinance.
And we also don't want to let a church or school come and be set up, even, even if it's not near a business. And then that would prohibit any business coming in in the future.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so this does kind of freeze things in time as of the adoption.
For, and, and we will, we are recognizing and, and respecting the, the churches and the, and the schools that are open and active at this, at this time.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have questions or comments regarding this entry? This is a new entry that we worked hard on last month. Do we have questions or comments? Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name. Sorry. And Mr. Hartman, while he's coming forward, would you, I have one typo there, the third sentence down. This ordinance shall not be.
Okay, when you say third sentence down?
Third sentence, third sentence down. Third line, excuse me. Third line, thank you. This ordinance shall not be.
Considered.
Is that right? Does that be, need to be in there? Okay. Yes, sir. Who are you?
My name's Ken Seeger.
Okay.
I thought I heard you say Christian. I guess I'm, I'm questioning then if someone comes in and sets up a mosque, would that be a problem if you're designating Christian? That was my only question.
This is what's interesting, right? Because that jumped out at me too when I was drafting this. Is the ordinance that we have is churches and schools. A church is a Christian building. You know, I mean, it's a, when, when someone says, I mean, a mosque is a mosque. A temple for, say, the Jewish religion is a temple, not a church. So when we use the term church, it's actually linked to Christian worship.
Okay.
So that, that was why the, the word Christian is in there, is I was pulling to define, we need to define church. We could, well, when I say this, remember, it's freezing things in time today. So moving forward, certainly a temple, a mosque, a church could set up. But it just can't, it won't affect a restaurant's right to be, to get an operational like that. It doesn't prohibit, obviously, those types of religious buildings to be in town, or anything like that.
Okay.
All right, and that's a good question and a good answer. Thank you both. Any other comments on this, this last paragraph that we've just reviewed? All right, so if we're, if we're all in agreement at this point, my suggestion would be to go ahead and let's have a motion. If we're in agreement, and let's have a motion then to, just like we did on the Sunset Isle, to direct Mr. Hartman to develop a, an ordinance to present to us for first hearing in January. If you can do that as well over the holidays. Oh, well, we'll just be bam-boom. Okay. All right, do we, are we in, in agreeance to, to do that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I think Commissioner Brown wants to make the motion. She's sitting.
I'll.
Ready to go.
Give others a chance to do that.
Okay, Mr. Gray's going to make the motion. Commissioner Gray. And Commissioner Brown is seconding that motion. And that is directing Mr. Hartman to develop the ordinance for first hearing in January. Any further discussion?
Nope, want to thank everybody for working hard on this.
Okay, you're welcome.
I was busy, right?
I worked, I did work hard on it, believe me. I spent quite a few hours on it. So, anything else? All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this motion carries. And I do want to thank Mr. Commissioner Melander, although we've already voted and the motion carried. Thank you for coming up with the idea of family-style restaurants at 350 feet. I like that, too. Yes. Commissioner Gray and then Commissioner Brown. Okay, so we, do we have everything then? Ms. Keisha? All right, then, if there's no other business, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas.